I'd like to call the October meeting of the Goochland Planning Commission to order. Ms. Worley, do we have a quorum?
All present, you do have a quorum.
Indeed. I'd like everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation.
(inaudible)
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 Gracious God, thank you for this time to gather to do county business. We pray that you grant us wisdom to be good stewards of Goochland County. Please be with each person here and give them guidance. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, we've had an opportunity to review the minutes of the last meeting. Does anybody have any corrections, additions, or deletions? Is there a motion that we accept the minutes as submitted?
Submit.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
The motions are recommended or adopted as submitted. Ms. Worley, do we have any changes to the agenda for this meeting?
No, sir.
And so there are no changes, all right. I'd like to open the citizen comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone who would like to speak about any items that are not on this evening's agenda. I would just remind everyone that you should come forward to the lectern and furnish your name and address. We'll ask each speaker to speak only once, and we'll ask that your comments be directed to the commission and not to each other. If you wish to speak as a representative of a group, please let us know and you may be allowed additional time. Three minutes is the normal time for individual speakers, and we would encourage successive speakers who either support an item or oppose to an item not be repetitive so that we can move through the agenda efficiently. And we'll ask the audience not to have any outward approval or disapproval of anyone's comments. Sir, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Steve Delaney. I represent an organization called Friends of Shepherd Town Road. I believe that I'll be the only speaker representing the group this evening.
Very good.
So, my wife Susan and I live at 2005 Shepherd Town Road in Crozier. We live in a vintage 1898 farmhouse that we have spent a lot of time and cost preserving and bringing back over time. It's not historic, but it's a very well-known property, originally part of the Shepherd family place. We also consider developer and his spouse Earl Thompson and Louise Thompson to be good friends and neighbors and have for many years. They have been very willing to allow their neighbors and the Deep Run Hunt Club to enjoy the many hundreds of acres that they have accumulated, as have others in the Crozier areas such as Fake Hill Patrick and many others. They've done a beautiful job creating Breeze Hill. I think it's between the Luck family and Breeze Hill, they've probably done more to beautify that entrance into the heart of the courthouse area of anyone. So, we're not opposed to development, and we actually think that the initial plan for Breeze Hill was very well thought out. Now that said, on behalf of our group, I must express my serious opposition to the concept of any subdivision entrance road opening up onto Shepherd Town Road, which is a recent development we've just recently been made aware of. I'm sure most of you have probably driven on there. Shepherd Town Road is a snake's back. It is very narrow, it is curvy, many blind curves, and also many blind hills. Three of the blind hills are right on my property line in the front, and as you're pulling up over a blind hill, you don't know who's coming the other way, and while the speed limit is 45, trust me, 55, 60 or more is not uncommon. And oftentimes, you don't run into a car, you run into a truck, and it may only be a Ford 350, but somehow or another, they put trailers behind those things that the width of the trailer is three feet to four feet wider than the truck. So if you get by the truck, your problems have just started. Point being that it's a, and Mr. Duke knows the road well, and sometimes it's his equipment trailers that are causing the problem. I mean, I'm not exaggerating that I have, and I've driven that road, you know, I could drive it blindly, but I have two to three close calls a month myself where I say, wow, that's ridiculous, you know? The other thing is it's heavily tree-lined and very shaded. It is one of the last roads in Crozier and Mountain Savit to thaw. School bus drivers have a heck of a time there. One particular hill just east of Beaver Dam Road where, in fact, that's where my property is, is the first property on the top of the hill east of Beaver Dam Road, and that bottom of that hill, right along Beaver Dam Road, is where this entrance would be. And if you asked me to pick up the most dangerous location along all of Shepherd Town Road from end to end, it would be that area right down by the creek, which also floods routinely, and there's been several times where you haven't been, in the last few years, where you haven't been able to get through. So, you know, I think that there are also places on Shepherd, that's another issue, but I'm expressing this because I think safety is what this is all about. There are places on that road right now that ought to be 35 miles an hour or 25 miles an hour. All we have is Randolph School wind flashing 25 miles an hour, and I think people out of respect for the school and the kids, they do respect that pretty much, but there are other places along that road. While they're not, they may not be children, there are people jogging, they're walking, there are a lot of people on horseback on that road. One of the organizations, when they have these big bike events in downtown Richmond, they send the bikers out there. It's a very well, a very popular weekend place for cyclists to come because of the elevations and the curves. It's a great training area for them. I'm over my three minutes. We're just saying in closing that we would, the original plan for these southern sections of Breeze Hill was that that would be a road built over the dam, and I know that dam well, that dam very well, because my neighbors and I ride air horses across it, and it's a beautiful little setting down there on the, by the lake there. We think using that approach to get the traffic back out to Fairgrounds Road through the main Breeze Hill entrance or Lanes End would be preferred. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, just one quick, yeah, before you leave the lectern.
How many property owners does the Friends of Shepherd Town represent?
I'm going to guess, because we had an organizational meeting about a week ago, 10 to 12?
Oh, it's just being organized. The key core group is probably 10 to 12, but we're going up and down the ladder.
And we do have, we have engaged counsel.
Thank you.
And I have a question for gentlemen. I think we have some correspondence from you on this issue as well. Maybe they were electronic, there were some emails?
There are emails that may have been sent to staff.
Yes.
Because we were, members of our group were requesting information, and I'm sure there probably has been some email sharing, correct?
Yeah, good, all right.
(inaudible)
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
All right.
I'm Beverly Thurston, and I'm also a part of Friends of Shepherd Town, and I just wanted to add one little addendum to the comments that are made, because I know you've got a long agenda tonight. We have given you a packet of information of three maps, and on the first map you will see it says 2007. Yes, you need to have them in front of you. The 2007 is the original approved subdivision plan that the developer submitted to you all and to the Board of Supervisors and was passed. You just need to know that that's the original plot, okay? Then we've added the developer's request that is coming to you, and we've put that as option A, and we can go over this in more detail when it's another appropriate time. But what we want you to recognize tonight is that we're very concerned in option A, he's going out Shepherd Town Road, out of Breeze Hill, and we want you to understand that on option B, there are other options for all of us to consider. So when you're looking at the developer's submission, please understand that there are other options. And what we've also put in the packets is sort of a summary of some of our comments, and I'm going to give another copy of this because I believe we're short one copy. But I don't want to, I don't want to take up any more of your time tonight, I just want you to be aware that there are multiple issues dealing with the Breeze Hill proffers that are coming to you, the new Breeze Hill proffers, and we've got a group over here that are representative of the Shepherd Town Friends that are here tonight, and if y'all would just raise your hands and show. A small group is here tonight, just to let you know that we're here.
Thank you.
And here is this other sheet of...
If you could pass this to Ms. Worley, and she'll see that we could copy this.
What is your address?
All right, thank you very much. We don't have this case yet on our docket, but I anticipate that we will, and there'll be certainly advanced notice when it does come before the commission, and you'll have an opportunity to come back and speak to your issues. So thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about an item not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll close the citizen comment period.
Thank you.
Ms. Worley, would you call the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, the first public hearing item this evening is in District 3. It's a conditional use permit, CU 2018-10, an application filed by Eric and Lisa Coffey requesting a conditional use permit for a microbrewery and distillery on less than 50 acres at 1581 Maidens Road on tax map number 421119C. The property is owned A2 and is 10 acres. The conditional use permit is required by Article 3, Section 336 of the Goochland Zoning Ordinance, and the comprehensive plan designates this area as rural enhancement.
Good evening. Greg Garrison, Principal Planner, Goochland County. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a microbrewery and distillery at 1581 Maidens Road. Site is located just north of River Road West. This is adjacent to the courthouse village. 2035 comprehensive plan recommends rural enhancement for this area. Current zoning is agriculture limited. Site is mostly open pasture, as you can see from the aerial. The applicant currently lives and operates a cidery on the property, and the cidery is a byright use that is consistent with state code. Approval of POD 2016-00025 was granted in February 2017, and further regulates the use, like parking and sightlines to Maidens Road. There are no new structures or modifications to the existing structures proposed, and the applicant just wishes to diversify his products to customers. A community meeting was held on June 21st, 2018, at the existing cidery to discuss the proposed conditional use permit. Staff, planning commissioner, Mr. Duke, and board member, Mr. Lumpkin, attended the meeting. No citizens attended. Should the commission recommend approval of this, the following conditions are recommended. Number one, a brewery and distillery may be operated on the property subject to these conditions. Number two, parking for the use shall be provided and maintained in accordance with the approved POD 25, or 2016-00025. And number three, the hours of the use to be open to the public are limited to the following Sunday through Thursday, 12:00 p.m. through 9:00 p.m., Friday through Saturday, 12:00 p.m. through 10:00 p.m. Number four, for outdoor music, the use of subwoofers and any amplification of sound is prohibited. No music amplified or acoustic shall be plainly audible beyond the exterior boundary of the property. Number five, fireworks are prohibited. And number six, prior to the transfer or lease, the property owner shall notify the planning department or, and the new owners of this conditional use permit. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Any questions for Mr. Garrison?
I say, is this expected to generate more traffic?
I would not anticipate it would generate more traffic. The applicant is here, he could probably answer that better than I could, but I think he, what he stated to us is that he just wants to be able to offer a different product. There are some people that don't drink ciders, so.
Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and make a comment or two?
Good evening. Eric Choffey, 1581 Maidens Road. I really don't have anything to add, I think it's covered, but regarding the question of traffic, no, we don't anticipate any additional traffic than what we already have with the existing cidery.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'd like to open to anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, any further comments?
I'm going to accept.
There's a motion to accept the applicant, to recommend acceptance, and a second has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The application is approved or recommended for approval as submitted. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, your second public hearing this evening is in District 4, RZ 2018-3, an application filed by Sarada Jami Shares Subarium Seri Sari Nariana Organization requesting rezoning reclassification of 18.71 acres from A2 and RR to RR with proffers to develop a three-lot single-family subdivision on tax map number 46176D2. The property is located at the intersection of Broad Street Road and Three Chop Road. The comprehensive plan designates this area as rural enhancement.
Thank you, Ms. Worley. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Tom Coleman, Principal Planner. This is a rezoning application to rezone about 18.7 acres to the RR district with proffers to build a three-lot subdivision. This property is located along Broad Street, about halfway between Woolville and Centerville. The subject property does have two zoning districts. It includes an RR district along Broad Street that is shared with other, several other properties that front on Broad, and it also has some agricultural zoning, which is also shared amongst many other properties in that area. The subject property and all the surrounding properties are recommended for rural enhancement area in the comprehensive plan. Looking at the arrow photo, sort of demonstrates, there's a number of structures and clearings that sort of reflect the low-density sort of rural residential character of the area. There was a community meeting held on May 16th, 16 people attended. There was a number of topics that were discussed, there was no real opposition to the case, but those topics include a gas line easement that traverses the property, was there going to be continued mowing of the hay field, just conversation about Three Chop Road and where the driveways would be located from the property, the potential for rental, or the potential for more lots, and what the architecture of the structures would look like. Just sort of orient you, this, in this conceptual plan, Three Chop and 250 are sort of at the bottom of the page or bottom of the graphic, but it does show the access road, that all three, the dwellings would have a driveway under that access road, and that access road would tie into Three Chop Road, so they would not have individual driveways on Three Chop or 250. Looking at the capital impact model, just the larger graphic sort of shows the number of units, some of the inputs that went into the capital impact model for this application was three units, and included about seven people is the estimated population, and then an analysis of the different infrastructure categories, what the impacts would be broken out, and then the smaller graphic sort of summarizes that, sort of demonstrates that the capital impact per unit, per housing unit would be $12,591, and you'll see that number again reflected in the proffers for the application. As far as the revenue sources, the recurring revenues would be about $9,400, and the one fees associated with the development of the property would be approximately $39,000. The applicant did submit three proffers. The first one is cash profit to address the capital impacts of the property. The second one would be, they've committed not to re-subdivide the lots any further, and the third one would be to require all access to the property to come off Three Chop, which would be from that private road that was part of the conceptual plan. That completes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Coleman? Would the applicant like to come forward and make a comment?
Mr. Chairman and the board of members, my name is Rav Jami. I would like to read the acceptance proffer. The proffers in this case are being voluntarily offered to address impacts specifically attributable to the proposed development. The proffers are reasonable under state law.
Thank you.
I do not have any other presentation, but if you have any questions, I can.
Any questions for the applicant? Yeah, I missed the community meeting, but I do ride by your site frequently.
Thank you.
It's a very nice hay field at the moment.
Yes.
And I understand that the only, maybe I should have asked Mr. Coleman this question, the only entrance will be off Three Chop Road, not off Broad?
Right. That's how, that's our plan, to have on Three Chop Road so that it's slightly easier to, for us to know.
And there'll be a single...
Having it on Broad Street because it is essential property, we think that it is dangerous to, you know, take exit from Broad straight away.
There'll be a single entrance...
Single entrance, and then we are going to...
To all three lots.
All three lots, and that, that's the planning.
Are these houses to be built, to be resold, or what?
Sorry?
The lot is being subdivided, so I'm assuming, are you planning on building houses eventually and reselling them, or what?
No, this is for personal use.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Let me open the floor to any public comment, anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, please come forth. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Here comes one. You made it just in, just in the neck of time.
My name is Dustin Griffey, and I live at 512 Three Chop Road. I'm just down the street from there. My question would be, how far from Broad Street would the entrance driveway be, and would there be, since there is a change in grade on that particular location, and it is what I'll call a mild right turn, it leads to keeping your speed according to Broad Street and then rolling on to 512, 612, which is Three Chop Road there.
I understand your question, but let me just...
It's just a little bit of a concern, and also if a line of sight would be hindered by somebody pulling out from that location.
Right, I understand your question. Before you go, let me just explain that that will be, that's not in our purview for this hearing. That'll be taken up when the plan of development is submitted and will be reviewed by the staff. Tom, do you want to elaborate further?
Sure, absolutely, thank you. Yes, what I showed the commission was just conceptual plan, they haven't finalized where that would be. When they do come forth with their survey plans, that will be reviewed by staff, and it will be reviewed by VDOT. They will be looking at sightlines, they'll be looking at elevations, those are taken into consideration when they're evaluating the location of that entrance.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else?
(inaudible).
All right, seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing period. Gentlemen, any further discussion?
I'll move a second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The application is recommended for approval as submitted. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, your third public hearing this evening is a rezoning in District 4, RZ 2018-04, an application filed by Cynthia Beverly on behalf of the Waldrop family requesting a rezoning classification of 3.04 acres from A2 to RN with proffers to develop a five-lot single-family subdivision on tax map numbers 5816A and 58178. The property is located at 1496 Hockett Road. The comprehensive plan designates this area as suburban residential.
Good evening. Greg Garrison, Principal Planner. This is a request to rezone 3.04 acres from Agriculture Limited to residential neighborhood with proffers to develop a five-lot subdivision. Property is located in the eastern portion of the county, southwest of the intersection of Pondview Lane and Hockett Road. 2035 comprehensive plan recommends suburban residential. Site is mostly wooded in the rear with a intermittent stream just to the south. The applicant is proposing a five-lot subdivision. There is an existing house with driveway access to Hockett Road, and that will remain, so there will be four new lots with access from Pondview Lane. The property was recently accepted into the Tuckahoe Creek Service District September 4th, 2018, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, and the lot size will be a minimum of 15,000 square feet. The density is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is a conceptual plan that was submitted. The lots two and three will share a driveway with access from Pondview Lane, and lots four and five will share a driveway with access to Pondview Lane, so it will be two driveways constructed onto Pondview Lane. The existing house will keep its existing entrance on Hockett Road. Capital impact review was conducted, and the applicant is proposing to mitigate development impacts on capital facilities in accordance with state law by offering a cash proffer of $12,585 per housing unit. This is consistent with the capital impact model, and the applicant is fully addressing the capital impacts of the proposed development. Revenue sources for reoccurring revenues is approximately $13,100, and the one-time fees are approximately $61,500. Community meeting was held on July 25th, 2018, at the existing house. Staff and 30 people attended the meeting. There were questions and discussions regarding who the builder would be, access from Pondview Lane, offers, number of new houses, development standards, renovation, demolition of the existing house, wetlands, and homeowners association and restrictive covenants. There was one person who spoke in opposition. Staff did receive revised, a minor revision to the proffered conditions today, so the time limits will need to be waived. The minor revision just eliminates that second sentence from condition number one. The development of the property shall generally conform to the exhibit Parkview Subdivision, AKA Palms Place, as the exhibit shown. Proffer number two deals with the cash proffer of $12,585. Proffer number three, proffers out, no more than four houses will come out onto Pondview And number four deals with access onto Pondview Lane and maintaining the one access onto Hockett Road. Number five deals with the right-of-way dedication of 15 feet on Hockett Road. Number six is open space to meet the state code. And number seven, Pondview Lane will be built to VDOT standards. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Garrison? I have one. I understand the road is currently a private road?
Yes, sir, it is. Pondview Lane is a private road.
Right.
The applicant has stated that he intends to turn that over to VDOT for public.
Right, so any, anything that needs to be done to bring it into compliance with VDOT standards will be done, is that proffered?
That was proffer, that was that last Pondview Lane, proffer number seven.
Okay. Good, thank you. Any other questions? Let me open to any public comment, if anyone would like to come forward to speak in favor.
The applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Would the applicant like to come forward? I didn't mean to overlook you, I'm sorry.
I'm representing my brothers as well, three are in attendance, and we're all part landowners. And I'd like to say that the proffers in this case are being voluntarily offered to address impacts specifically attributable to the proposed development. The proffers are reasonable... The proffers are reasonable under state law. And I think everything was covered in what Mr. Garrison had said.
Any questions for Ms. Beverly?
I think I want to hit the last applicant. Is this like a family subdivision?
It, um, what?
No, it wouldn't, it would not classify as a family subdivision under our zoning ordinance.
Okay, well, I mean, will the homes be built for resale or what?
Yes, sir, they will be, yes. So my four brothers and I, my, our mother passed away in December, so we're all part landowners.
Is the house currently occupied?
No.
So that's for sale too?
That goes with the, so it'll be one house and then the four other.
And you understand that the road has to be brought up to VDOT standards?
Yes, they're developer.
Before you sell the lots? We had one problem in the county recently.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much. Let me open to public comment. Anyone that'd like to speak in favor or opposition to this application, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment period. Any further discussion or questions, gentlemen? This is in my district, so I will make a motion that we.
Mr. Schalhars, I need that motion to accept the proffers, to be able to review the proffers.
Is there a motion to accept the proffers as submitted?
So my.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
There we go. Now you can do it.
Okay. Now, I would like to motion that we accept this application as submitted. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? The motion is carried. It is recommended for approval.
Just to clarify, when you say as submitted, you mean with the new proffers?
All right.
The, the new proffer draft or the new.
Yeah, let's clarify the motion to say with the proffers.
Thank you.
With the amended proffers.
Mr. Chairman, your next public hearing this evening is a consideration of a resolution adopting the 2040 Major Thoroughfare Plan and including it on the Transportation Chapter of the County's Comprehensive Plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Todd Kilduff, Deputy County Administrator for Community Development and Economic Development. And we have a presentation for you here for the 2040 Major Thoroughfare Plan. This is an update to our existing Major Thoroughfare Plan. I just want to remind you that this is just a presentation on the report. The actual physical report is in your board packets. It's still currently in draft format and we keep it in draft because if you guys have any comments that we need to address and if you want to move this forward to the Board of Supervisors next month, we want to make sure that we can address those comments and that, and present to them the final report. So here's a, I shouldn't say a quick agenda, there's a few bullet points here. I want to start out by going over the public meetings that we've had with our citizens. I want to go through the Major Thoroughfare Plan progress. What is the Major Thoroughfare Plan? Why is it important to us as a community while we're updating it? The next three bullet points are really sort of tied together. We want to go over the existing traffic conditions in the county. Where are our current deficiencies based on the traffic that we're seeing today? That's really how the Major Thoroughfare Plan is, it begins with, with being studied when you, when you actually compile the data into a, into a traffic model. The next bullet point is what would our roads look like if we applied the year 2040 traffic to them and not doing any improvements? So it's an interesting exercise to see what happens to any of those deficiencies. Are there more deficiencies in our road network? And then the third item, well, the third from the bottom is any types of improvements that we would recommend to accommodate any of those deficiencies that pop up in the first two items. And then we have some supplemental information after that and then we'll go through the next steps for you. To touch on the public meetings, I'd want to stress a little bit that this process has been a long process for us. I think we're probably in month 10 or so now of the Major Thoroughfare Plan. We've had several community meetings with the public and I do want to stress that our public is fantastic. In these community meetings, we could see the passion from our public, the love from our public when it comes to what these roads look like, what the road network could look like and what the 2005 plan was showing and the recommendations that came out of those public meetings for what the 2040 plan would look like, this new current plan. But some of the items we just want to touch on with, with what came out of those two community meetings that we had, one back in March and one a few months ago, the second one a few months ago, was they wanted us to preserve the rural character of the county. That's not just on the Major Thoroughfare Plan, but we hear that throughout rezoning cases, conditional use permits and things like that. All of our citizens really want to make sure that that's sort of number one in our minds. We had questions and concerns about the safety of rural roads. We have several intersections that we'll go through in some later slides on recommendations for what those would look like, but we did have some questions and concerns on some intersections here in the county as far as operations and safety goes. We'll explain, they want us to explain the importance of this plan with the comprehensive plan, so I'll touch on that in a later slide. They want us to avoid neighborhood impacts, sort of goes without saying, but we want to make sure we do that. We had some residents come out from the Hockett Road corridor, from the Cobblestone Circle area and several other areas that wanted to make sure that what this road network did accommodated for what we currently have in the county. So that was huge for us. Provide supporting documentation for the recommendations. We'll get into that during the recommendation section. Avoid amenities. Why would we want to impact any of the amenities that our county currently has, for example, Richmond Country Club? And they want us to balance the priorities versus the growth. So to touch on the progress to date, already went through some of these items. The first public meeting was back in March, March 27th of this year. This was really sort of the beginning of the process. We wanted to sit down with the public and go over the existing 2005 Major Thoroughfare Plan, show them what that, they, what that plan has and take any concerns and comments from that and then take that information, work it into the traffic model that our on-call engineer did, that they're actually the stewards of, and see what comes out of that with regards to the comments that we had. Then we had a second public meeting on August 9th where we had incorporated all the comments as best we could from the first public meeting and provided recommendations to the public with some justification criteria. And out of that meeting, we also had some, some very good comments that we took into consideration. That put us in a position where we could go to the Board of Supervisors for a work session that we had on August 29th. And now this, this plan is before you this evening on October 4th. And if you, if you approve it, it would be a tentative meeting, well, we're saying tentative for the moment, for a November 7th public hearing with the Board of Supervisors. And I'll touch a little more on that in, I think, the final slide, but this plan isn't just for us. VDOT has to review it as well. So VDOT is actually inserted into that process as well. And I'll explain that a little more on a later slide. So going into the presentation, what is the Major Thoroughfare Plan? Well, for us, it's a long-term transportation planning tool. And what some people may not know is this is actually part of the comprehensive plan. This is not an independent plan just by itself. For example, the Utility Master Plan, that doesn't really touch on any other, any other plans. This plan is actually a part of the comprehensive plan, which is why you're hearing it. Provides for orderly development of roadway networks as land development occurs. And it identifies transportation multimodal improvements. Please don't ask me to say multimodal 10 times fast because it's just not going to happen. Why is it important? It provides guidance to our county leaders, our citizens and the development community for transportation, transportation-related decisions. Provides guidance for preparing regional transportation plans. We always have to keep in mind that, yes, we are Goochlin County, but our road network isn't just confined to our county. It actually touches many of our surrounding counties. We have roads that go into Hanover, Louisa, and they have roads that come into us. They all touch. So we want to make sure that we're taking into consideration regional plans. It helps the county to become more competitive with transportation funding. Not having a plan doesn't help you go to VDOT and apply for any of the funding mechanisms that they have. And they have a lot of funding mechanisms. They have smart scale applications, they have transportation alternatives, they have revenue sharing. And unless we know what we want as a county, it's very difficult for us to go for any of that funding. It provides direction for allocating county funds to the transportation improvements. And it is a living document. It outlines all of our future transportation improvements. So why are we updating it? Well, the previous plan, and I've said it a few times already, is from 2005. The world in 2005 is very different than it is today, specifically in Goochlin County. In 2005, that was the rise of the housing, the housing boom, so to speak. 2008, it crashed. We've been in a slow recovery ever since. And as a result, that 2005 plan isn't necessarily attributable to what we're seeing today in the county, which is why we're updating this plan. And we do not plan on waiting another 13 years to update this. This is something that we're going to be updating approximately every five years anyway, so. And just because I say it's from 2005, I don't want to insinuate at all that it hasn't been a good document. It's actually been a phenomenal document for us to have. It helped us with the capital impact model. And it's also, as I said, it's part of the comprehensive plan, so it's already helped staff when it comes to looking at cases. It assures the transportation network aligns with the updated comprehensive plan as mentioned, reviews and analyzes the existing traffic network operations and deficiencies, plans for our future growth, and helps us obtain costs for those proposed recommendations. So the next few slides will actually go over what I started out by saying, what, what does our county look like today? What is the traffic model data that our engineering firm is telling us our county looks like today? So there's going to be a few slides, a few maps to show here, but this one's specific to traffic volume. Let's just say, bear with me for a second, but the yellow lines are, let's just say, good, less than 5,000 vehicles per day. You'll see a little bit of orange on there, a little bit of red, and then there's a deep magenta line on the, on the east side of the county on Broad Street. And none of these items were really a shock to us. We know we drive these roads all the time and we know what our guts are telling us, but our guts aren't the data. It's not the model. The model's actually proving that what our guts were telling us is actually true. We also looked at lane capacity. This is, let's just say a road is designed for 10 vehicles per day and 10 vehicles per day are on that road. Well, 10 divided by 10 is 1 and it pushes you into the category you see in the color coding. One is at capacity. It means the road is handling exactly what it was designed for. What we want to be cognizant of is if that 10-vehicle-per-day road has 11 or 12 or 13 cars on it. That pushes it above capacity, so that's why it's a concern of ours and we want to make sure that we stay out of the, the orange and the red as, as best as we can. And as you can see, we have a lot of green and blue roads in the county, so we're either very below capacity or just below capacity. There's a map that follows this slide, but we wanted to explain really what it meant first. It's going to talk about level of service. You're going to hear me say LOS throughout the rest of the presentation. But level of service is really, it's a grading system. As you can see on the left side of the screen, it's A through F, just like you have in school. It's basically how comfortable are you on a road? This slide shows you how, how it's really attributable to, let's say, driving on an interstate or a road that has three lanes. If it's a level of service A, you feel very comfortable on that road. You may not have anyone in front of you or behind you for a half mile or a mile. You can change lanes freely and there's nothing really restricting you. The bottom, the F, that's more of, let's say, heavy traffic, a beltway traffic, DC traffic, something like that, where you don't feel comfortable. You don't feel like you can change lanes very easily. It's also applicable to, to traffic signals. You know, if you're at a traffic light and it turns green, red, green, red, green, red, and you still haven't gone through, you start to feel a little uncomfortable. I hate to say the word angry, but I can say a little angry if you're watching the signal change a few times. But that's really what this is measuring. That's what this metric is for. So as far as the level of service, we, our goal, our goal is to get a level of service C or better. So we want to get A, B, or C. And again, these are existing conditions today. You're going to see Oilville Road, it's sort of in the right of center there, and Ashland Road as being red, level of service D. Again, these are items that we already know about. I'm not sure if you've been on Ashland Road and I-64 during rush hour or even sometimes just any time of the day. But that, that interchange there is actually in poor condition. Not, not the interchange itself, but the amount of traffic that it's seeing. And the same goes for Oilville. Whenever I hit 64 east on my way home from work, the traffic going west is backed up almost to the rest area. So we know that there's an issue there as well. So this, these two red lines are not really surprising to us at all. We also looked at crash data. More specifically, about six years' worth, 2011 and 2017. Doesn't include I-64, Route 288 crashes, and we'll explain why a little bit later. But in that timeframe, we've seen about 2,200 crashes. Sadly, there's been about 21 fatalities, about 1,000 injuries and 1,100 property damages. But if you look at the chart on the lower right, you can definitely see an upward trend that we're seeing in Goochlin. And that's why it's important to us. It's always important to us anyway. But we want to make sure that we're looking at the trends to see what's actually happening. We know that there's issues and we know that they're getting worse, so we want to make sure we address that. This is the hotspots, as we call them, the top crash analysis locations. This is not all of them, this is just sort of the hotspot locations. Again, none of these should be a shock. We, we hear about this in the news, we hear about it from citizens. But I'll just read them through real quick. We have Broad Street Road between Mannequin and Wilkes-Ridge Parkway. Wilkes-Ridge Parkway is also called the notch area. Broad Street Road between Fairground Road and Oilville. Ashland Road between I-64 and Broad Street. And I want to be specific on that. It's not from I-64 up to Hanover, even though we do have a recommendation on that section. This one's specific to I-64 to Broad Street because of the traffic that we're seeing at that intersection. Patterson Avenue between River Road and Blair Road and Fairground Road between Sandy Hook Road and, and Broad Street. And let me know if I'm going too fast through some of these slides. So those were the roads that were the hotspots. Here's some intersections and slash interchanges that are hotspots as well. Fairground Road at Sandy Hook, we do have a recommendation on that. I don't think it's a secret what's going on there. So we have a really good recommendation slide a little bit later to show you. Fairground Road at Broad Street. Ashland Road at Broad Street, Broad Street at 288. As mentioned, Oilville at 64. And then when you're on Oilville Road going south right before it hits Broad Street and then the Sandy Hook Whitehall Interchange, if you know what I'm talking about, that's sort of that Y-intersection, that Y-split that's there in Sandy Hook. This is the exercise I mentioned earlier. What we wanted to do was take our, the 2040 traffic projections. And I'll explain what, what the 2040 traffic projections really mean and why those numbers are there and why that specific year is there in, in a later slide. But applying that traffic to our existing roads and saying, we're not going to improve anything. We're not going to change any intersections, we're not going to widen any roads, we're not going to do anything. What does that mean for us? So this was an interesting exercise to walk through. So going into the data that I just mentioned, it's the 2012 Richmond Regional Transportation Demand Model. If you're not familiar with transportation at all, VDOT loves acronyms. You're going to see a lot of acronyms throughout this presentation. So I'm going to mention the RTDM here later. But that's really where this data is derived from. That's the base data that our engineer used. And it's important to look at the word regional. They're looking at the entire region. They're looking at not just us, they're looking at Palatine, they're looking at Chesterfield. Don't forget, we, we share 288 with both of those counties. They're looking at Henrico, Hanover, Louisa. I mean, it's a big, big traffic, transportation demand model. The crash data, as mentioned, is for six years. That came from the DMV website. That was, was used for the hotspots. The future traffic conditions were also developed by using some of our fully funded transportation projects, which we'll go into. And just as importantly, and this is important, it kind of came out of the board work session that I mentioned. It's the 2040 Population and Employment Projection Data that came from the 2018 Capital Impact Model. It was used for the future traffic conditions and the, and we shortened the Capital Impact Model to CAPIM. The CAPIM was developed utilizing the comprehensive plan, proposed plans and projected development. Let me say that another way. The comprehensive plan, the proposed project and proposed development helped create the capital improvement model, the capital impact model. And out of the capital impact model came the 2040 projections and employment data. So here we go. This is the volume slide showing what the volume, our road, volume of traffic our roads would see if we made no improvements. So of course, the deficiencies we saw on the previous slide, there was a lot more yellow lines. If you noticed in the, the central and western area, you're seeing a few more orange-colored lines. You're seeing a few more red and magenta lines on the east end of the county as well. So that's why this is an interesting exercise to walk through. For the lane capacity, you start to see a little bit more red pop up, a little more orange pop up, showing that some of our roads are starting to get at capacity. orange pop-up, showing that some of our roads are starting to get at capacity or achieve above capacity. And again, when we say above capacity, if you look at River Road on the southeast end of the county, by the Randolph Square neighborhood, Rivergate neighborhood, that one is also impacted greatly by Henrico traffic as well. I've been on that road numerous times, and I'm constantly seeing the flow come in from Henrico over there. So, that's why we got to kind of look at this globally, regionally. Level of service, there's only two red lines on the existing slide, and as you can see by the year 2040, if the demands are correct, you're seeing a lot more orange and red and magenta lines on this as well. And just to refresh your memory, we're still looking for that level of service A, B, or C for our roads, which would be the green lines. This is where the bulk of the slides are going to be. The bulk of the presentation is going to be the future traffic conditions with recommended For the recommendations, we felt it was very important that you understand where these recommendations came from. We have a set of guiding principles that we use. It's going to be on the subsequent slide. We also use transportation plans and traffic studies, more specifically, the Plan 2040. If you're not familiar with that, that's from the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission. They have a division called the TPO. It's a transportation planning organization. Sorry, a few more acronyms. But they have a Plan 2040, which we're a part of, along with eight other localities. It's the RR-PDC, RTPO is comprised of nine localities. We use existing safety and operational data. We use the Comprehensive Plan because that has the base projections in it, and the analysis of future road conditions with no road improvements, which were the previous slides. And last but not least was the public comments, taking them into consideration. We had, I mentioned the two community meetings we had, the board work session that we had. What I didn't mention was the intermediate meetings that we had. We had several meetings here, just in our office, with some of the residents that had some major concerns with the plan itself. We had meetings with a lot of developers who had concerns with the plan, and we also had some meetings with the engineers that worked for some of the developers as well. And we had them sit down with our engineer to try and talk about some of the concerns and questions that they had. One of the items that came out was justification criteria. I have a subsequent slide for what that is, but the public wanted to know how we were justifying some of the recommendations that were in these slides. So, our guiding principles. First and foremost is safety. I've been in the construction world for many years, and sometimes it sounds a little repetitive to say it over and over, that safety is number one, but safety is number one. It really is. We want to make sure that everyone's safe when it comes to any improvements that we make, or any plan that we take into consideration. But for this, the safety aspect was improving the travel safety for all user types. We also looked at the designated growth area and rural character, recognized the importance of different county areas while preserving the character of each independently from the rural side as well. Connectivity, making travel more efficient by creating better connections within key areas. It's, I mean, we always think about us as driving our cars, but this is also fire and rescue as well. If there's a house fire, or somebody's having an issue in their house, and they call 911, we want to make sure that there's that connectivity there to make sure that people can get those EMS services at the speeds that they need to get them at. We mentioned level of service, trying to see the LOSC or better. Economic development comes into play, and want to promote the high-quality economic development through targeted transportation investments and multimodal, which is providing a balanced transportation system, not just with roads, but with sidewalks, bikeways, trails, and park-and-ride lots. This is a new slide from the board work session. There was some questions from the board supervisors about the Cumberland landfill and the Shannon Hill Regional Business Park, which is actually in Louisa. So, the proposed Cumberland landfill, our engineers went back to their desks and started working some numbers, and their analysis showed that, I apologize, if you're not familiar with the Cumberland landfill, I believe they just approved that. Is that right, Tom? Cumberland approved their landfill? The Cumberland landfill, I think that's been approved by Cumberland, right? Yeah, that was new. So, the Cumberland landfill has been approved, and the question is, what kind of truck traffic, truck traffic, if anything, is our county going to see? Are trucks going to be utilizing I-64 the most, therefore coming through Goochlin County to get to Cumberland? What effect is it going to have on our county? And the analysis shows that there is, while there will be truck traffic, yes, there is no recommendation that's being offered as needed for that project. The Shannon Hill one is a little, I don't know, I wouldn't say easier to talk about, but they're really just in the conceptual phase. We don't know what they want to do or what they're doing there, so it's really hard for us to analyze that. So, knowing that, we would be looking at this plan again in five years. I'll just read the bullet point. I-64, Shannon Hill interchange, it may need modifications as the type and density of that development is identified, but until we have something to go off of, it's not something that we can analyze at this point in time. So, we just want to let you know that that was a question at the board work session, or two questions at the board work session. This slide comes directly out of the existing plan. I want you to focus on the map itself, and you see all the colors. You see a lot of blue lines on there for improvements. You see a lot of yellow lines on there for making some roads four lanes. I mean, the list goes on and on of the color coding that you see on this map. The next slide's going to show you the importance of updating this plan and what it means to us. What we wanted to do, I'll just give a quick setup for it, we looked at this plan, and we felt it was important, before we get into the recommendations, to show you from this plan what projects are not being recommended anymore. So, if you look at this map, we've highlighted those projects from the 2005 plan that the new plan, this updated plan that's up for recommendation and consideration, is showing that we don't need to do anymore. I've always used, and probably always will use, the Broad Street Road as my example. The plan showed, excuse me, the 2040 plan, or the 2005 plan showed Broad Street being widened almost all the way to Flavanna border, from two lanes to four lanes, and, you know, gut reaction is, is that true? Does that really make sense? If you've been on Broad Street all the way out there, you're not seeing a lot of growth. I mean, sure, there's some new houses being built here and there, but it's not seeing anywhere near the amount of growth we're seeing on the east end of the county. So, we asked, obviously, the engineers looked at it globally, they looked at every road, and they came back to us and said, pretty much said that after the Centerville Village, it doesn't need any improvements. So, that's the visual representation. If you look at the bullet points sort of right-of-middle there, the 2005 estimates for all those projects was a little over $100 million. Some of the projects listed didn't have costs associated with them, but some did, so we added up what we had in the plan. You can look in the 2005 plan and see those costs. But that was about $100 million. Extrapolating that dollar value and applying it to today's dollars, again, we kind of live in a different world today than we did in 2005. Costs have increased significantly, especially with construction. It's actually very difficult to find contractors to do a lot of work, especially with roads and utilities. But we've extrapolated that data, and we came up with a little over $200 million for those same roads in today's dollars, and those numbers actually came out of our 25-year capital improvement plan. So, the good news with this is, yes, these are roads that we wouldn't be seeking funding for. These are not roads that we'd be improving, but that's $200 million worth of road projects that we don't have to seek money for, and we could apply our money and our focus more on the projects that we are recommending.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Of the roads that were recommended improving in 2005, how much of that work actually was funded and done?
Oh, I don't know. Can you hear that?
In the 2005, those, these recommendations for road improvements, how much of that was actually done? Well, we continue as I did and not having any of it done.
Which projects in 2005 were actually done?
Yeah.
Probably, the main one was probably the Broad Street widening. It was done in 2013. That was probably the main one that was done.
Well, not a high percentage of...
Right, that's probably the primary one that comes to mind. Probably the improvement, small improvement that was done on Manneken Road, just south abroad, through chopped area. Those are examples of projects that were in the 2005 plan.
Yeah, I guess, thank you, Tom. The general response would be not a lot.
Just a quick follow-up on that.
Sure.
The widening of Broad Street, was that a county expense? Or was that a private developer did that?
No, that ended up being, that was originally TPO regional money. It ended up being a stimulus fund project.
I'm sorry, but?
Stimulus funds.
Stimulus fund, there was no private money in that deal? No developer money, no?
Well, there was no direct developer money, but they did donate right-of-way, they did participate in the project.
So, this is sort of a, I guess, foreshadowing. This is an overall map of the projects that we are recommending. And we're going to go through each one of these projects individually, because each one has its own intention that it requires, so each one's going to have its own slides. But really, what you're seeing is a western, a central, and an eastern. I'll show you a map here in just a second of how we've divided these projects up and how we're going to present them to you. I mentioned that the public wanted to see some sort of justification criteria. As you'll see on the recommendation slides, when I get to them, you're going to see these one, two, three, or four, all of them on some of the slides. The operational criteria and the benefits that we get, you'll see in the description on the right, and again, this is also in the draft report in front of you. Connectivity, that was a concern of the residents, making sure there was connectivity, making sure there was multimodal, aspects taken into consideration, as well as safety, which I've already said, safety is definitely number one, so we want to take that into consideration in all, but we wanted to explain that these four icons that you see in the middle of the screen, they're going to be on each recommendation. There's also a question on multimodal. I mean, I've said it a few times already, there's just a few questions in some of the community meetings and the board work session as to, what is that? What does it really mean for us? It could mean shared-use path, if you heard at the town hall last night, or been following our transportation alternative funding. We were, we just received a few months ago, I think July 1st, $200,000 through the TPO for some trails on the east end of the county. So, we're very excited about that. It's sort of the phase one of putting in an entire trail network through the West Creek area on the east side of Route 288. So, we're very excited about that. It could be bike lanes, it could be sidewalks, it could just be paved shoulders, it could just be widening a shoulder, widening a road to make it a little more safe for bikers and runners as well. So, I mentioned the service areas. We've broken this up into three sections to be in line with the capital impact model. This is where the capital impact model has these three service areas as well. We have the western, the central, and the eastern. So, starting in the western, there's actually only two recommendations on the western side, and you're going to see a few extra slides in here that the board supervisors didn't see, only because when we got to the western slide, we went right into both recommendations, and the board supervisors had a lot of questions as to why these two recommendations were being recommended. So, we wanted to make sure we had a little bit of a background on why they're here. The two roads, if you saw on the previous map, River Road West and Haydensville-Fife. River Road West is a primary east-west roadway, and it's not just for us, it's for the region. Haydensville-Fife is a primary north-south roadway that provides access to I-64, and the 2012 Regional Transportation Demand Model identifies these roads as showing increases in traffic volume, which is why they're being shown. So, it sort of begs the question, if these roads are being shown as having increases, are the other roads not showing increases? And the answer is, they are showing increases, but those roads don't exceed the 5,000 vehicles per day that I showed you on a previous slide. And just to refresh your memory, we wanted to show you again, so I just did a little snippet of that end, and as you can see, there's River Road West and Haydensville-Fife showing that they moved from the yellow to the orange color. So, that's why they are recommendations, not the other roads in the area. There was also a question on the crash data. What you're seeing is a snippet that we didn't create, it actually came from DMV's website. It says it's just the 2017 crash data, and you could see there's a lot of injuries and property damage along River Road for the entire length, and Haydensville-Fife for the entire length. This is important because, really, the question was, at the board meeting, the question was, well, why do all of River Road West if maybe just the area closest to the courthouse is seeing these issues? Because the traffic model doesn't really separate out individual segments of a road. It doesn't say every tenth of a mile on River Road, it's just seeing River Road West and any of the roads that intersect with it. So, we want to show that it is, in fact, the entire length of River Road, or, yeah, River Road West from the courthouse area to the Flavanna border, as well as Haydensville-Fife. And if you see in the upper-left corner, you can see the criteria that we chose on the website. If you're wondering why Whitehall Road doesn't have any crashes on it, there are issues on other roads, we just highlighted those specifically because those are the only two that we're discussing today. This is the potion stamp type slide that you're going to see for every recommendation. I just want to go over it real quick. This is the first recommendation. This is River Road West from the Flavanna line to Sandy Hook Road. You'll see the icons that I mentioned, the justification criteria on the left side. We're going to go through existing, what the road looks like today, what the 2005 plan was saying, what the 2040 plan was saying, showing you the level of service, as well as having a map on the right side for you to look at. So, the existing, it's, today, it's a two-lane undivided road. The 2005 plan was saying, keep it a two-lane undivided road. The 2040 plan is saying, keep it a two-lane undivided road. However, it is recommending widening, excuse me, widening the right-of-way to accommodate wider shoulders, which would be for, as the icon in the upper-left shows you, multimodal and safety. If you have bikers on the road, it's what the model's showing us, that it's a little unsafe for the bikers, so having a little bit of a wider shoulder for the bike just makes it safe for everyone. And the level of service, since we're not saying that the road needs to go from two to four lanes or anything like that, you'll see existing, it's a level of service B, and without any improvements, it's a C, and since we're not really recommending, oh, thank you.
That doesn't mean a bicycle lane, a dedicated bicycle lane, though, just widen.
It doesn't necessarily mean that, no, sir. Thank you, that's a good question. Widening could just be an extra three feet of shoulder, without any type of painting or striping on the road at all. It could just be a wider shoulder, is that correct, Tom? That road in particular has seen about 153 crashes, unfortunately, one fatal crash. There's a lot of information here, I'm not going to read all the way down through it, but it really just goes over crash type, how many crashes, and you see the bar graph on the right, which shows all the number of crashes throughout the years. We want to show you what a cross-section would look like. We already know that the road is there and what it looks like, but just making it a little bit wider. We have proposed cross-sections for every single recommendation, well, almost every recommendation except for intersection recommendations, so I'm going to keep rolling through here. So, if I go too fast, if you want to see something again, please let me know. Haydensville-Fife Road is basically identical. Existing, it was two-lane, undivided. 2005 plan said two-lane, undivided, and the update is saying, keep it two-lane, undivided, but accommodate for wider shoulders, so widen the right-of-way. It's a level of service A today, applying the future traffic, it's a C, and not making any, not making any improvements, it's a C, and it stays a C. And here's the traffic crash data associated with Haydensville-Fife Road. Have about 50 crashes, thankfully, no fatalities. And it's the same cross-section as River Road. Those are the two recommendations for the western end of the county. We'll now go into the central service area. Whitehall Road at Sandy Hook Road, this is not the road itself, this is the intersection. The existing, it's existing as a Y-intersection configuration, but it does have some safety issues associated with it. The 2005 plan said to relocate that curve and add left turn lanes. The new plan is saying, we can do that, that's the second bullet point, or it's sort of an either, you can do either-or, or potentially locate, the potential location for a one-lane roundabout or other improvement. So, the model is showing us that there does need to be a type of improvement there, but what it didn't want to do is just pin us down to relocating the curve and add its turn lanes. We can do that and do something else if we wanted as well, or do something else. And there's no cross-section for that. This was mentioned near the beginning of the presentation. Fairground Road intersection and extension, this is actually two projects. This is actually right behind this building, right in front of the Dunkin' Donuts. The intersection is a roundabout. It's actually fully funded by VDOT. That's the, and VDOT splits their projects into three different factions. They have the engineering, the right-of-way, and construction. All three of those are fully funded by VDOT, and they're actually in the engineering phase. They actually provided us, were they 20% drawing, and I'm going to show you that in a later slide, so it's pretty exciting to look at that. But this isn't just the roundabout, it's also an extension on the west side of that roundabout through, behind this building, towards River Road, with some improvements on River Road as well. So, what this does is it helps us with their operational. It's definitely identified for connectivity, as well as multimodal, because it would have sidewalks around the roundabout and on the extension road. But existing, well, the road isn't there. But existing, well, the road isn't there. So existing, there's nothing there, except at the intersection, it's a T-intersection. And I've been on that, if you've been on that road, it's actually very difficult to make a left turn from Fairground onto Sandy Hook because of the traffic coming north, the traffic going south, and the traffic coming out of the two exits and entrance that Exxon has, and the, excuse me, the traffic coming out of the Food Lion parking lot as well. The 2005 plan said, let's do a two-lane, undivided road, add left and right turn lanes at the intersection. 2040 plan is showing that the extension itself to River Road to be three lanes, which would be one lane left, one lane right, with one in the middle for turn lanes, with the one lane roundabout at the intersection. And because it doesn't exist today, you're seeing no level of service up until a level of service B if the road is installed. So, yes, this is a very confusing drawing. This came straight from VDOT. I wish we had a little more ability to go in and turn certain things off, to highlight the roundabout itself, but you can see how the basic alignment would be. Again, this is fully funded by VDOT, they're in the engineering phase now, obviously, this plan came from them. What they're also doing for us, and we have to give some appreciation for VDOT and working with us very well on this project, they're really just supposed to do the roundabout. They offered to do the design of the extension that you'll see a little, that goes towards the west, and you see a service road, actually, I have a little laser light here, I'm going to point to the service road, behind the Exxon station. VDOT's actually going to design that service road and some more extension for us, and they're going to include it in the cost of the project, so it is at no cost to Goochin County citizens. That is just the design. They said we can't work the construction aspect into that, so they did tell us that if we wanted construction, we would have to pay for that. But they did help us out on the engineering side of things. The construction side, it's about $455,000. That was all identified about a year ago, when we had a community meeting on it. And our goal is to work the extension, which isn't shown. You can see it on the far-left, it says Route 632, Fairground Road Extension. So we don't have the extension on there because we don't have anything designed yet. But our goal is to work that project seamlessly with VDOT's intersection. We actually pursued revenue-sharing funding with VDOT, so we would put up half the money for that extension. VDOT would put up the other, or the state would put up the other half of the money. We feel very confident that's going to go through, and again, our goal is to work that seamlessly, so as the one project is being constructed, the other one will as well. So that's our ultimate goal for that area. Mentioned, oh, yeah, well, the schedule itself, the engineering's underway with the construction being in the year 2021. We do have the 20% drawings, and we have pursued the revenue-share funding. And we did have a VDOT scoping meeting last month, so we were very excited about that because it helps us start putting the checks in the checkboxes to keep this project moving Fairground Road again, but this is going east towards Broad Street. So it's Sandy Hook Road to Broad Street. We have some safety issues here, as well as operational issues. The existing plan is showing a two-lane, or, well, existing, it's a two-lane, undivided road. If you've ever been on that road, I'm sure you have. The 2005 plan is just saying widen the right-of-way. The 2040 plan is saying something a little different. It's actually saying that that road actually does need to be widened. The question is, is it a three-lane road or a four-lane road? If you look to the level of service chart on the bottom-left, you'll see that if we do a three-lane road, it would be a level of service D. If we did a four-lane road, it would be a level of service B. The wider the road, you get a little more traffic on, and the level of service gets a little bit better. At the board meeting, the question was, well, the board was sort of leaning more towards the four-lane road, however, the question was, how much is the, what's the cost difference there? So we wanted to provide the cost data before, to help them make a decision and help yourselves as well. And this is actually one of the decisions you will have to make in this, during the public hearing process. If you approve this, we would be recommending to move forward with the four-lane from a staff's perspective, but we did want to provide the cost in there as well. We've also made safety improvements, they're already completed by VDOT at the intersection on Broad Street. If you've seen their flashing LED stop sign that they have out there, we feel that's helped significantly, as well as other signage as well. It took them a little while to get a stop sign, I think it's four feet in diameter or something like that. Apparently, they don't make that, somebody else has to make it for them. So it took a little while to get that stop sign, but they got it done.
So you're saying instead of a three-lane road, this indicates you can make it a four-lane?
Yeah. And that's, that's, yeah, thank you, that's directly as a result of, if we wanted to achieve a level of service of higher than C, in this particular case, it would be a B if we did a four-lane. And we do understand the limitations that that road has. There are some creeps and things, yes, sir.
The costs for these alternatives are, in today's dollars?
Yes, those are today's dollars.
So depending on when the project is done, the number could be quite different.
That's correct. That's correct. So we wanted to show you a cross-section of a three-lane road. So you see the car on the left, car on the right, with turn lane in the middle. And we wanted to show you a four-lane road, two north, two south, or two east, two west. Another question from the board supervisors was, well, if we don't widen Fairground Road at all, is there an alternative route? So we had our engineers go back to their desks and look at any type of alternative routes to find something that would help accommodate without impacting the traffic, well, impacting the traffic model positively. And they came back to us and said that they couldn't, they couldn't find another route that didn't impact existing neighborhoods, that didn't have major environmental impacts, and the cost was just significant for any of the other routes that they came up with. So we're not showing you any of those routes because we definitely know when, one of the comments we had at the second community meeting was not impacting residences and houses and things. That was, that's why you see that as the number-one bullet point. There have been improvements to the, to the intersection, but as you can see, these are numbers that existed before the intersection was improved. We have 33 crashes and unfortunately, one fatality. Oilville Road, again, we have issues with the intersection itself. That's really what you're seeing here. Yes, you're seeing the road, but you're also seeing the intersection and the issues that the intersection creates for Oilville Road itself. There's operational and connectivity issues here. The existing, it's a two-lane, undivided road. 2005 major thoroughfare plan showed it to be a four-lane, undivided road. We're recommending a four-lane, undivided road. And that's the road itself, but let's talk about the intersection for a second. We are actually pursuing, as of about, what is it, I think it was mid-August, we made a smart-scale application. That's a VDOT funding mechanism for improvements to that intersection. At the moment, VDOT has recommended a roundabout for the intersection on the north side of 64. So we are pursuing, we're already in the process of pursuing the smart-scale funding for that. The application's been made, and we should hopefully hear something this year, maybe in the next 10 months or so, on whether we've been approved. Now, just because you've been approved in VDOT's mind, that doesn't mean that the project's moving forward in the next six months. VDOT takes a little while to get things set in place, it could be several years down the road, but that's the reason why we wanted to make sure that application is in now, because smart-scale applications are every two years. If we didn't make the application, we would have had to make, we would have had to wait two years to make the application again. So that's why we want to make sure that was in. So the level of service today is a D. If we don't do anything, it's an F. But if we do this project and the intersection improvements, we will have a level of service B. And they are proposing a park-and-ride, which we're fine with. VDOT's proposing a park-and-ride on the road as well.
Is, in addition to what's there, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
In addition to what's there already? With the park-and-ride?
Parking lot ride? There's not any plans right now to add a park-and-ride lot.
Okay. Okay.
I was just on that the other day, and I can't remember, is, from Fairgrounds Road to the Oilville Road, Broad Street, is that four lanes already?
No, that's two lanes.
So you have a four-lane dumping into the three-lane, back to a four-lane? Why wouldn't you widen Broad Street?
Four lanes coming down and then Broad Street, two lanes.
Why wouldn't you widen that portion of Broad Street to handle all that traffic?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to pull up with our on-call engineer that question. We're writing down all these questions just to make sure that we address that, but I believe what it has to do with is the turn lanes. I just didn't want, I just don't want to speak for the on-call engineer, but I believe it has to do with the turn lanes and making sure that that traffic moves a little smoother through there. There's also, VDOT's actually doing improvements, it's not listed on here because it's part of the secondary six-year plan, again, another funding mechanism. The S-S-Y-P for the intersection on Broad Street and Oilville Road as well. So we'll get that question. Thank you for that question. We'll go ahead and make sure we get that answered by our on-call engineer. Thank you. This is with the cross-section of the road. Broad Street Road at Cardwell, this is not a road, this would be the intersection. Currently, it's a Y-intersection configuration with some turn lanes. The 2005 plan is showing realignment of the intersection itself. The 2040 plan is showing converting the intersection to a T-intersection. And that actually came out, that actually didn't come from our on-calls, that came from VDOT. VDOT actually did a study called the Fairground to Cardwell Road Safety Study. It was completed last year, and that's where that recommendation comes from. And we've had a lot of calls from citizens on this intersection. So just on citizen feedback alone in the study that was done, that's why you're seeing this as a recommendation, you see it as safety and operational with concerns. River Road West, this would be from Maidens Road to Heritage Road. The icons, we have operational connectivity and multimodal as our justification criteria. Existing today is a two-lane, undivided road. The 2005 plan is showing a three-lane, undivided road. And the 2040 plan is showing that the amount of traffic it's going to see would be a four-lane, undivided road with constructing multimodal facilities to be consistent with what the comprehensive plan has in it. And it would end at Heritage Road because that's where it's already existing as a four-lane road. So existing, it's a level of service C, with no improvements, it would be a C, but adding in the multimodal improvements as well, and widening it with that extra lane from what the 2005 plan was saying would get it up to a level of service A. And this is a cross-section. So moving into the eastern service area. From Tucko Creek Parkway, Route 740, this isn't just the Parkway itself, it's also the two intersections on the east and the west side of it. The icons, as you can see, it's all four of them, it's safety, it's operational, it's connectivity, it's also multimodal-related. Today, it's a two-lane, undivided road. The 2005 plan is showing a four-lane, divided road, adding left and right turn lanes at the intersection. And the 2040 plan is showing a four-lane, divided road, adding left and turn lanes at the intersection, as well as multimodal facilities. Today, it's an A, but if we don't do anything with all the future demands, it would become an E. With these improvements, it would be a level of service B.
I have a quick question, Todd.
Sure.
On roadways where we're proposing that we go from two-lane to four-lane, is there ample right-of-way for this, or would we have to eminent domain?
Yeah.
Some profiting?
Typically, we do not have that right-of-way. There are a few exceptions, but one thing this does provide guidance for is we have developers come in that we can look for opportunities to obtain right-of-way as part of their development.
Yeah, because along roads where we have existing developments, where they may have entrances or gatehouses or walls, or, I mean, that would have to be, have to be taken out?
Right, I mean, that's, you know, going back to the conversation about Fairgrounds Road. If that's part of the complication there, about three lanes versus four lanes, there's a lot of development along that road, there's a lot of houses along that road. That's not just vacant land there, so absolutely, on a case-by-case basis, we would have to look at each one of those improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify a little bit, because I'm hearing some questions come out of it, this plan is to help us as a planning mechanism. What it isn't is construction plans, it doesn't get to that level of detail, that's not really what this is for. This is just a model telling us after the data's input, what a road would need to be to accommodate the traffic that it would see. So there are some other layers that would need to be looked at if something was to move forward. And all that would be looked at in great detail with VDOT or developer.
Thank you.
It's be a cross-section? Sorry, I see you're looking at, let me know if I go too fast. So you guys looking at it?
Wide for that road. I travel that road two, three times a day.
Yeah. It'd be a 90-foot right-of-way. Rockville Road, this is on the northeast end of the county. This is safety and multimodal-related. It's existing a two-lane, undivided road. The 2005 plan is showing two-lane, keep it a two-lane, undivided road, and the 2040 plan showing, keep it a two-lane, undivided roadway. But just like with the River Road West and Haydensville-Fife Road, this is just widening the right-of-way for multimodal facilities. And as you can see, the level of service is what it is, that's why we're not recommending, you know, additional lanes. It's already an A. It would be a B without any improvements, so therefore, it'd mean a B. Cross-section with a wider shoulders. Ashland Road, just like with Oilville Road, this road's seeing some impacts from the interchange itself. We already know that, being on that interchange, I've been on that numerous times, if you've been as well, there's a lot of construction traffic. We got two industrial parks just north on Ashland Road. We also have a landfill, we have a quarry, and actually, some more residences up there as well in Parkside Village, so. But it's existing as a two-lane, undivided road. The 2005 plan's saying, make it a four-lane, divided road, and the 2040 update is saying four-lane, divided road, but adding multimodal facilities to it, which would be sidewalks. And just to clarify, the sidewalks would not go up to the exit ramp on the north side of 64, that would be taken into consideration. It probably wouldn't go past the three-chopped road area, maybe a little bit more, but I just want to clarify that the sidewalks and things like that would not go up to 64 that far north. The interchange, just as with Oilville, we actually made a smart-scale application for that as well, and we actually held a community meeting on that many months ago, where we presented, well, I shouldn't say we, VDOT did a study and came up with two recommendations, a double roundabout or a divergent diamond interchange. The divergent diamond interchange is what you see in Zions Crossroads. The public did not like the double roundabout at all. So what was voted for was the divergent diamond interchange, so that's what we're seeking funding for. Actually, we already made the application in August with the other smart-scale applications. And that's actually going to improve, back to the park-and-ride lot, I got that one confused with the other one. This one would actually be improving it, making it wider. They presented us with an option that actually had it big enough where a bus could go in there and turn around. So we feel that that would be good for our citizens, as well as anybody else to use that parking-the-ride lot, because I've been in the parking-the-ride lot that's on the north side, on the northeast side, it's extremely tight in there. It's actually sometimes even difficult to park if somebody has a big truck on there, so it needs improvements regardless. Level of service, today, it's a D. If we don't do anything, it's an F. But if we do this recommendation, it would be a C. And this is what the proposed cross-section would look like. So we talked about south, Ashland Road, south of 64, this is Ashland Road, north of 64. This was originally just one road, I think when we were doing the first and maybe even the second community meeting with the public, and we saw that there were some issues with trying to have Ashland Road be looked at as just one road all the way, but splitting it, you actually see a different recommendation here, so that's why you see this as two separate items. So Ashland Road, north of 64, it's existing today as a two-lane road. The 2005 plan is showing it as a four-lane, divided roadway, and the 2040 plan is showing it to be a four-lane, divided roadway. Today, it's a D, again, with those two industrial parks up there, Rockville and the near, and all the other construction traffic that that sees, especially, again, a lot of this comes out of, out of the intersection with I-64, but that's where a lot of the pressures are being seen. So with these improvements, we would have a level of service C. And there would be a cross-section. And I forgot to mention that with the intersection improvements for the smart-scale application, one of the issues they had with looking at it and designing it is right now, it's just two lanes, and they tried so hard to keep it two lanes, but it just wasn't working at all. So that smart-scale application is to have a second bridge to give us the four lanes. And they tried to not do that, of course, because bridges are extremely expensive, and they didn't want to do that. But unfortunately, due to the traffic demands that that intersection, that interchange is seeing, they are recommending having a second bridge be built next to it. Hockett Road realignment, some icons here, we have safety, operational, and multimodal was taken into consideration. It's existing as a T-intersection, excuse me, my throat's, I got the air blown right on my throat. The 2005 plan is showing realigning the intersection, and the 2040 plan is saying to construct a south leg of the intersection with multimodal facilities. So what does that mean? If you're on Ashland Road going south, and you want to get on Hockett Road, you have to go to Broad Street, you have to make a right at a traffic signal, then you have to drive down Broad to drive down Broad Street, then you have to go left. Somebody's phone is buzzing. And then you have to make a left on Hockett Road. So, there's two turning movements with that. So, what we want to do is realign, what we're proposing is realigning Hockett Road to be in line with Ashland Road so they connect. So, if you're on Ashland Road going south, you have to hit the traffic signal, and when the light goes green, you cross Broad Street and you go down Hockett Road. So, we don't have an alignment shown here specifically because we don't know exactly what it would look like, but we are going to have some engineers look at that and provide different options for us, because we want it to take into consideration many things. As with a common theme, we want to make sure we take into consideration the neighborhood that's there. Hickory Haven and Samory Forest is the two neighborhoods that are right there. There's also a vet and a few other businesses that we want to make sure we don't impact at all. Some additional information on this, there already is money on it. It is already partially funded back in 2014. There's one and a half million dollars already set aside by the Transportation Planning Organization to realign this intersection, but it's not all the money that would be needed. So, we would have to do new cost estimates to see what that new cost would be, but the good news is we already have one and a half million dollars on this project. The current capital improvement lists, it lists this project as our next project to pursue, so I want to make sure I highlight that. Fairground Road is our first project, and we're doing it now. It's the Fairground Road extension in the intersection. This is the second project that's currently listed in our capital improvement plan. Three-Chop Road and its reconnection, this would be Ashland Road to east of 288. Right now, Three-Chop Road is a cul-de-sac on the east side of 288, right behind the new Audi dealership. It's also a cul-de-sac on the west side of 288. And we know that by connecting both cul-de-sacs together, that it would alleviate a lot of the traffic burdens that Broad Street's seeing, not just from our residents but also from Henrico's residents as well. And that would be a bridge project, not a bridge over, I want to clarify, it would be a bridge under 288. We had a question on that at a previous meeting, so it would be, I say a bridge, it would be a tunnel under 288, making a bridge under it. But it's existing, it's a two-lane undivided road. It wasn't a part of the 2005 major thoroughfare plan, but the new plan is saying make it a four-lane divided roadway and to extend it under 288 with multimodal facilities. VDOT actually did an AMP study, that's an arterial management plan study, which basically looked at the entire Centerville Village as a whole and the road network that it has, and that's really where this project came about. And we actually, I mentioned two smart-scale applications already, this would be the third smart-scale application that we made just a few months ago, and we hope to be funded for that. And because it doesn't exist, no level of service. I mean, there is a road there already, but we're talking mainly the connection here, and with those improvements, it would be a level of service C. Oh, sorry, let me clarify something. The smart-scale application is not for this entire road. The smart-scale application is just for, like, the tunnel area plus or minus a few feet on both sides, I just want to be clear, we're not seeking funding for the entire road to Ashland Road, it's really just to get under 288.
So, that comes in between the Golf driving range and the Audi deal.
That's right.
Back, couldn't it?
That's right. Yeah, where the drive shack's going in.
Right.
And both parties were well aware of this, by the way, we've been talking to them. This is what the cross-section would look like. Wilkes-Ridge Parkway Extension, Wilkes-Ridge Parkway currently dead ends just after the apartment complex called A Retreat at West Creek in the notch. This would be a road that would connect that all the way down to Tucker Creek Parkway by the HCA Medical Center. The three icons, we have operational connectivity and multimodal to take into consideration. The road doesn't exist today, it wasn't a part of the 2005 plan, but this plan is saying that it would need to exist and be a four-lane divided roadway with multimodal facilities on it. And to be clear, to date, it's been privately funded, the county did not build Wilkes-Ridge Parkway, it's actually been privately funded by developers, and if it goes in, it would be a level of service A.
Why is it connecting with the, on Tucker Creek?
Yeah, that, good question. Again, this doesn't get into the level of detail specifically how it would connect in, would it be a T-intersection, would it be a Y-intersection, would it be a roundabout? It doesn't get to that level of detail, we just know that the model has shown it would have to connect to Tucker Creek Parkway at some point over there. There's a lot of things that we would need to look at as well, such as access management, how close that interchange, the interchange would be to that connection point, so, but it doesn't get to that level of detail. So, this would be Hockett Road, from Hockett Road to that road I just mentioned, the future Wilkes-Ridge Parkway Extension and a new Route 288 interchange. Existing, the road segment does not exist today, it wasn't a part of the 2005 plan, but the 2040 plan is showing that to alleviate some of the traffic burdens that Hockett Road is seeing, it would need to be installed as a four-lane divided roadway. And we're offering to VDOT, actually, we're pursuing with VDOT what's called an IJR, it's an interchange justification report, they also have IMRs, it's interchange modification reports. This interchange doesn't exist, so there's nothing to modify, this is just to justify that one is needed. So, we're currently in talks with them, and this is actually going to be Transportation Planning Organization funding, an application on November 1st, so in just a few weeks, we'll be making an application for that interchange. This is what that road connection would look like. This is Tucker Creek Parkway Extension, so this is south of the previous two recommendations. The roadway doesn't exist, it would be a four-lane divided roadway.
I think we've tried this before.
There's some conversations with this one, right?
I think we've tried this before, was the conversation.
That's right, that's right. This is the infamous bridge project with, to connect to Henrico.
I think we should, I think we should do it and make Henrico pay for it.
Did you say toll road, is that?
Right.
One-way toll, just one-way. So, yeah, so the 2005 plan is showing this route here, and the 2040 plan is still showing it, and we're getting pressures from Henrico on 288, and it's a regional model, not just our model, but that's where a lot of these pressures come from. We know Henrico doesn't want it, we know that they don't want it on our plan, we had a citizen send us an email saying that they don't want it on our plan, but we have guidance from the Board of Supervisors and from this plan itself showing that it is a road that's needed, and there's nothing hurting us at all in keeping it on the plan. What is, requires a little bit of conversation is the level of service. If you notice, it's listed as a D. There's a very specific reason, this is one of the only recommendations that has that on there, and here's why. When we talked to our consultants about why it wouldn't be a C, because that was what they were tasked with, we said, "We're looking for level of service C on all of our roads." This particular one, they said it barely, barely popped into the D category, and because this is a bridge, and because bridges are extremely expensive, widening a bridge from a four-lane to a six-lane, let's say, the cost just really didn't make sense, so that's why this one in particular is still at a D. It's barely a D according to their model. However, if you wanted it to be a C, we're welcome, we welcome your feedback, and we can change that to a six-lane if that's what you choose. But I just wanted to make sure you understood why that was a D. River Road West, Route 6 from Heritage to Hockett Road, existing, it's a four-lane road. The 2005 was saying, and it's a four-lane road, but the 2040 plan is saying just to construct multimodal facilities on it, so you see the icons, connectivity, multimodal. It's existing today as an A, which is really good news. I've been on that road multiple times, never really had any issues on it. With no improvements, it would be a B, so without any improvements, it would remain a B. This is a road cross-section, showing the four lanes. This is the southern area called the, well, we're calling it the Southern Prime Economic Development Area, or for short, we're calling it SPODA, so bear with me on another acronym that we just created ourselves. But this has to do with operational connectivity and multimodal. Existing, it's just primarily undeveloped land. The 2005 major thoroughfare plan was showing a north-south connector from Tucker Creek Parkway down to Patterson, or, you know, down to Patterson/River Road, and an east-west connector from Hockett Road to West Creek Parkway. There was, in previous iterations, previous community meetings in the board work session, there was a network of roads that was shown as recommended from our on-call engineer in this area. Our Board of Supervisors was looking at that road network, and if you look at the, if you were there, or if you pulled up the video, you'll see that one of the questions was, I feel like, or one of the statements was, "We feel like this is creating a solution to a problem that doesn't really exist." And I'm paraphrasing, so forgive me if I misquoted one of the board members, but that was a real takeaway. So, why put roads in this area when we don't really know what this area will look like? We don't want to impact homes, we don't want to impact the Richmond Country Club, we want to keep Hockett Road two lanes. So, we were trying to, as a staff, we were trying to find the best way to find a common thread between the developers in that area, several developers, between the citizens, between the citizens on Hockett Road, the citizens on Cobblestone Circle, the Richmond Country Club, and the traffic model and what it was actually telling us. So, we were trying to find some common thread between all of that. And showing a circle here with the text on the lower left that you'll see, I'm just going to read it, says, "Traffic analysis results show that a network of road improvements to the existing roads are needed in this area, and that would be determined by future traffic studies." So, it's basically saying, we recognize that there would be something that would be needed here, but we're not, we don't know what that would look like, but future traffic studies would help us define what that road network would be. Citizen feedback was to keep Hockett Road two lanes. At the first community meeting we had, there was a lot of concerns about widening of Hockett Road, which is what the 2005 plan showed. When we came back for the second community meeting, we said, "Hey, we can keep that two lanes, that's what the model's showing us, and this little road network here is going to help us achieve that." At that second community meeting, there was a question that a resident said, asked, said, "Well, how do we know that you're still going to adhere to what you're saying now?" So, that's why we have these caveats in there, just because we're eliminating those roads, we want to make sure that if something was to go in here, that the main points, the main caveats from our citizens are taken into consideration, and I want to, I'm just going to say it again because it's extremely important that we say it, citizen feedback includes keeping Hockett Road two lanes and avoiding all the existing residences, specifically on Hockett and Cobblestone Circle, and avoiding all recreational amenities in the area. So, what makes this a little difficult to look at, why is it a little difficult to analyze, and why am I focusing on this a little bit more? It's because there is no pending development in that area, so it's kind of hard to propose items to you as opposed to, let's say, the Hockett Road realignment projects, which we know we need and which the traffic demand model's showing we need, and which our on-call engineers are showing we need. But there is no pending development in this particular area at the moment. There is no community consensus on the appropriate road network. I just sort of went into a little more detail on that, but I want to stress that there is no community consensus on what it needs to look like. However, there is consensus, I'm going to say this the third time because again, it's very important to us, there is consensus to keep Hockett Road a two-lane road and to avoid the residents and recreational amenities in that area. Proposed developments will require detailed traffic studies that offer those proposed solutions. So, we did, really, really did our best to try and find some common thread, may not make everyone happy, but we really did our best to try and find some common thread to have a recommendation for you in this particular section. Moving to the level of service, so with the improvements, you still see some red and some magenta, but let me explain a little bit more what that is and why that is. Let's focus in the central area where you see River Road West here in the courthouse area, you'll see a red line. We want to maintain the character, and the Board of Supervisors and everyone wants to maintain the character of the two-lane roads here in the courthouse area, the two lanes, one north, one south. And in doing so, by not widening River Road here in the courthouse, it does have some impacts on the adjacent roads. So, you see a little bit of yellow on River Road West, you see a little bit of yellow, which we already know on Fairground Road, and a little bit on Maidens Road just south. It's a little hard to see that little yellow line there, but that, I just wanted to explain a little bit more what that means for the courthouse area by keeping the rural character that we have here in the courthouse, and why, you didn't see a recommendation to widen River Road West from two lanes to four lanes here in the courthouse.
Yeah, let me just jump in here for a moment.
Sure.
We're going to take a quick break as soon as Todd wraps up, and we'd like you to come back to the podium, Todd.
I only have 100 more slides.
Pardon?
No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, as soon as you, as soon as you wrap up, we'll take a break, five minutes, and then we'd ask you to come back to the podium for any questions that we may have, so.
Okay. I think we have about eight more slides. Okay, well, let me continue. So, again, the, let's just talk about the southeastern section, you see some red and some magenta there. Again, this is the SPODA area, and we want to make sure that whatever's done in that area with those, the road network, the road network that was identified was, is now just a circle, just a bubble, so that does impact the model. The model still has to be run without those roads, and this is what the road network is showing us. But as that area develops and as traffic improvement, or traffic, TIA's Traffic Improvement Analysis are performed, that would affect these positively. So, I just want to clarify that, that's why you're still seeing those as red. Lane capacities is very similar, very similar conversation that I just had on the traffic volumes. I see a little bit of red here in the courthouse area on Broad Street, and in the northeast corner, that's Pounce A Tract. It's really, the reason that's red is it's really the Hanover, Henrico side of things that's impacting that road. There's a question at the first community meeting about priorities. What are our priorities? We have these recommendations now, what do we think needs to be done first, what are the priorities for the county? So, what we wanted to show you first was projects that are already underway or funded. Most of these have already been touched on, we have the Patterson Avenue, West Creek Parkway, that's a new signal, it's right-of-way and fully funded, and as a matter of fact, that should be completed in mid-October, mid-November. So, if you've been out there, you'll see the masks going up and all kinds of stuff happening with those traffic signals, so we're very excited about that, that's well underway. Route 288 and Broad Street, those will be receiving traffic signals, it's not going to be for a few years down the road, but their, VDOT's actually in the engineering and the right-of-way phase as we speak, but that's a few years out. We know that that's one of the area, problem areas that we get a lot of calls about. Fairground Road and Sandy Hook, as mentioned, it's a roundabout. Fairground Road Extension, I'm just going to quickly go through here because I know we need to get to a break, but these are our short-term priorities, and the Hockett Road realignment project, as I mentioned, that's the second on our CIP list. Midterm priorities, these come out of the recommendations, I-64 Ashland Interchange, we're applying for smart-scale funds, and you can see on the right side, there's five projects for smart-scale funding, and I'm just going to go through this real quick. I'll get to the bottom on Route 288, that's the new interchange that I mentioned on a previous slide. Some supplemental information, and I'm almost done, I promise. If this update is approved by the Board of Supervisors, the major thoroughfare plan would be adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. This should be revisited every five years, and if approved, we would have to go back into the county's 25-year Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. All the 2005 projects were in that plan, and as I've already stated, a lot of those projects are being eliminated, and we have some newer recommendations, so we have to update that. And the capital impact model would require updates as well. It has some policy-related items as well that roll out of this. Construction of right turn lanes are recommended with regard to new developments, or, with regard to development of new subdivisions, which we know. And we also want to make sure we have something that states stub roads from new developments as well to other areas and other sections. That's really more in the vein of interconnectivity between areas and the county. So, there's a lot going on with this plan, and I recognize that's a little bit like drinking from a fire hose, it's a lot of information all at once, but we didn't want you to think that this is the only transportation planning tool that we have. The comprehensive plan identifies several local road interconnectivity roads that we also always want to take into consideration but weren't really a part of our recommendations here. I'll show you what those are here in just a second, but it also doesn't, it also doesn't take into consideration at the moment developer and individual projects. Each significant project has its own TIA. And just to show you what I mean, this is the courthouse village, you're probably very familiar with the comprehensive plan and how it looks, but you'll see the, on the left side, you'll see some yellow dashed arrow lines highlighted with blue. Those aren't recommendations in this plan, but they are interconnectivity-related, so we do have the comprehensive plan as a tool as well that shows us some of these additional roads that we take into consideration when it comes to planning and zoning cases. I'll just skip over this quick, same thing goes for the Oilville Village, and there's a lot more in the Centerville Village, but there's a lot more activity out there. Next steps, incorporate the planning commission comments, if you have any, into the finalized draft report, which we'd present to the Board of Supervisors, we want to prepare that final report. This is also a VDOT function as well, we have to supply VDOT with the plan. So, the draft report you have in front of you, VDOT also has at the moment, we gave it to them just a few weeks ago, I believe, so VDOT needs to review it and approve it, and we need to make sure that that's approved as well for the Board of Supervisors. So, that's why you still see tentative up there. If this plan's approved tonight, we're still going to try and hit that November 7 deadline, so we may have to push. 7th deadline, so we may have to push, beat out a little bit on, on, on their review of this plan. But it is county staff's recommendation that this plan is up, this updated plan to be approved by the planning commission with a recommendation, as I mentioned earlier, of fairground roads being planned for with the four lanes from Sandy Hook Road to Broad Street. And with that, I'll hold off on questions and we'll...
Yes, yeah. Let's take a five-minute break, please. We'll come back at four minutes to nine, and Todd will ask you to come back for questions. I think everybody's back in the room. I'd like to comment quickly here, Todd. I'd like to compliment the staff. I sat through both of the community meetings.
Is your mic on?
Thank you. I sat through both community meetings. There's an awful lot of detail, an awful lot of man-hours have been put into this plan. It is a long-range vision for the county, and I just want to compliment the staff led by, by Mr. Kilduff for your, for your excellent work in putting this together. So with that said, are there any questions for...
Before we get to questions, I'd like to just introduce, introduce the staff that's going to help answer the questions.
Please.
Because as much, I cannot take all the credit, definitely can't, but Mr. Tom Coleman was the project manager internally on it, Ms. Joanne Hunter and Ms. Debbie Byrd. This was really a four-person team effort with our on-call engineer. As you mentioned, it wasn't just community meetings, but it was many phone calls and emails and back and forth with our on-call engineers and amongst ourselves. So a lot, lot of late nights and weekends spent on this, but, but thank you. But I, I cannot take credit, but it was a team effort.
Right. And the results are evident. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Kilduff? All right, any other comments that you have, Todd, before we open the...
More than welcome to open the public hearing, sir.
All right. I want to open the public hearing here for anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the plan that is before us. Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes to address the commission.
Good evening. My name is Tony Pelling. I live at 70 West Square Drive. I speak for myself, but with Mr. Rigsby and I, we are the authorized representatives of the Randolph Square Community Association. And we were pulled here by your advertisement, which very clearly said that one of the proposals was to widen River Road to the Henrico border. And we took that to imply that River Road from the, the Saco Creek Bridge all the way through to Route 6 was to be widened to a three-lane road. And that caused a certain tremor amongst our, our neighbors. But we've been assured this evening that that is now not part of the plan. And that was a misunderstanding probably on our part, but that's why we came. I have to admit that I am a long-lapsed transport planner. As you can tell from my gray hairs, it was a long time ago that I was a transport planner. And so I thought I ought to take an interest. And the thing that struck me this evening was that the 2005 plan was overweening and overreaching. And the danger is that this, too, might well be overreaching. I don't know about you, but after that masterly presentation, I have mental indigestion. And I don't know how you, with the responsibilities you carry, are going to sort out what your role is, because it seems to me that this is not a plan, it's a list of road projects. And I know from my own experience, once a road project gets in a plan, it's very difficult to dislodge it. And if all these things went forward, and you approve now, your approval will be quoted time and time again. Well, the planning commission agreed it back in 2018, and so it has validity. You're, I think you're being a bit stampeded because at one stage you were asked to agree to a particular project. But I don't know how you're going to comment on that project because you were only given very limited information about it. So I sympathize with you in terms of your role, but I think just to rubber stamp this with, means that you are rubber standing all these individual projects. And there will be members of the public who want to know what on earth you thought you were doing at the time when their front gardens and their walls and their pathways are taken away as each project comes forward. My view is that by 2040, we'll be in a very different situation. Park and rides were an encouragement to me. My own experience suggests that we should be limiting traffic movement, not encouraging it. Because I think the main criticism that I have about this plan is that with 12 or 11 projects now on the eastern side, all other things being equal, you are speeding the traffic through those particular parts of the system. And that's only going to encourage more people to live further out. Either they stay in bed for another 30 seconds, or they move 30 seconds further out. So what this is doing is gainsaying the county's concern to protect the rural area of the county. I think my time is up.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Chairman Commissioners, my name is Richard Haynes, 50 Fleetwood Lane, right next to Richmond Country Club. Thank you for letting us speak to all of you. The board of supervisors heard a lot from me over the last year because my property has been quite heavily impacted in the decisions in what is now called Speeda, the southern primary economic development area. And my property is Fleetwood Lane. Let's see if I can even find it here. Get myself where I am. I think we're right. Right here, right there. Right there we are. Right there, we have 15 acres there. We've been right there next door to it for 36 years. And can we pull up slide 76, please? I do want to thank Todd and Tom and their staff and the county for everything, the interaction that's been going on. Clearly, when we have spoken, they have responded. And if you look at the 2040 MTP, there again, we, we really like the fact that they heard us, that citizen feedback keeps, keep Hockett two lanes, and a lot of other details that the county has heard what we've requested. But, but not totally. It's my understanding that in the, the law requires this MTP for 2040. And what concerns me is this undeveloped, we're presenting all kinds of detailed plans for all kinds of areas, but we're taking the, the Speeda area and we're not, we're saying, no, we don't know what's going to go on here. It's my conviction and my neighbor's conviction that there needs to be part, there needs to be a plan for this area. And we have presented excellent plans that were compiled by an excellent traffic engineer by the name of Dexter Williams multiple times to the board of supervisors. And we had a community meeting. My wife and I and 13 of our neighbors together asked for a community meeting to discuss this road plan for Speeda on September 20th. I think you all should have been invited to that, and all the board of supervisors were invited to that. And we sent out a letter on the 20th. The meeting was on the 25th, which was last Tuesday. We had a community discussion, and then it was agreed that we'd send out a, a letter sharing our convictions of why what we call Option 3 or the Hockett, oh, excuse me. I have, I should have 12 minutes. I have three minutes. I have my wife, I have David and Sherry. I'm burned, oh my goodness.
Well, that's right.
I thought they were going to speak.
I can see you're representing a group.
I'm representing quite a few people, yes. And so we, we got together last Tuesday night to discuss this, and we agreed to, that what we wanted to do was send out a petition to the community, taking our stand. Because Todd doesn't know this apparently, so I may slightly disagree with him. There is a community consensus on what we would like to see in the Speeda area, and, but it, it goes beyond the Speeda area because we are very concerned about this area up here, about traffic coming from Hockett, from the Capital One area, down. And we still see no way to relieve. Now, it's great news that the county has said, we are not going to four-lane Hockett. And their Hockett Road people here, some of them left, I think, that are very concerned about that. And so we're still concerned about not having a plan. And we believe a great plan, a fantastic plan, a logical plan that Giff is going to present in a minute, has been presented to the county. And we have discussed that plan with our neighbors and our community. And the result of our meeting last Tuesday night and our community, we would like to present to the commission over 125 signatures. There is a consensus of what we would like to see in this area. So I'd like to present that to the board. I think you all should have already received a copy. But the community that lives in this area, the people that are greatest affected, we do have consensus, and we'd like the plan that has been proposed by the engineer Dexter Williams, and we fully support it. It solves all the problems. We don't know what's going to develop there, that's true, but this new plan does solve the problem. Whatever the development is, this new plan was one time called Option 3, or we could call it the Hockett Road bypass. We believe that solves the problems for all of us who live in that area, and it meets the needs of the future development of the county. So I'd like you to look at that. And all of us here, we, we, we're just in agreement, and we've gotten now, I think, over 125 signatures. So there is a consensus of the area of what we'd like to see.
Is this your document that you passed out?
Uh, I think it is. Yes.
Oh, that's your document, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
So a different group?
The same group.
Oh, the same group?
Yes.
Okay.
He's an attorney. I'm a resident.
And is he representing your group?
Uh, not directly, no. He's representing the landowners north of us, the larger land parcels. But we are 100% agreement with what they are proposing. So...
All right.
Any questions?
No, thank you, sir. You gave the petition to Ms. Worley?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Gifford Hampshire. I'm with the law firm of Blackingship and Keith. And as we discussed a second ago, I represent five property owners which own about 980 acres, which is the area, within that area that we've been discussing as the Speeda. And I will repeat with Mr. Haynes, and therefore I'd like a little more time for that reason. I'm, I'm, I share Mr. Haynes' view that we are heartened to hear the county shares our goal and the goal of the Hockett residents, that the Hockett Road should not be... goal of the Hockett residents, that the Hockett Road should not be widened to four lanes. However, doing nothing in this area will do just the opposite of that. And the reason is, as I've stated in my letters both to the Board of Supervisors, and I also copied that to you all by my letter dated October 1. The reason for that, as Mr. Kudlow said in his presentation, is that the very purpose of this document is to provide a guide for future development. And I emphasize the word "future development." If we have nothing here, what we're going to be left with is nothing for the future developers against which to compare their future traffic studies, which will be an ad hoc, undisciplined process, which will produce the very opposite of the result of trying not to widen Hockett Road. And for that reason, we share the petition of the Hockett Road bypass. Let's see, how do we do this?
We're going to have to scroll for you, because it's a PDF.
Okay, okay, thank you. So taking the first slide here, this is the Speeda area. This is map 13 from your long-range land use plan. You will see the Speeda area here is in gray, and if you look over here in the legend, it's called prime economic development area. Now, this isn't our map, this is the county's map, and you all developed it. This means that that area in gray is designated for the highest development in the county. And therefore, responsible planning demands that you don't do nothing in terms of planning, you do something. And the something that you should do is to plan infrastructure for the very sort of prime economic development that you want in this area. Next slide, please. So this is the 2005 master transportation plan, as Mr. Kudlow said. You will see over here on the right, the county has long planned a north-south collector in this area, this red area, and also an east-west connector for this area, precisely because it has been planned for prime economic development, a designated growth area for many years. Next slide, please. You have a hard copy of this, harking back to the HH Hunt rezoning in March of this year. I was not here, but I read the transcript, and I read the proceedings, and I heard about the proceedings from my client. And this commission was very concerned that allowing the HH Hunt development to go in here would have a profound impact on the north-south, what we call the Hockett Road bypass, because it would be built right in the middle of it. And therefore, this commission deadlocked, as I understand it, and then suspended the rules in order to even get the rezoning to the Board of Supervisors. But my point is that that was a major concern of this commission, the existence of this road. Next slide, please. So, there, I think, one before that. There we go. This is a markup, and you have it in hard copy before you. This is the county's GIS map, which shows the original alignment that was presented to us in the March 27 meeting. And you see here, you see the north-south collector is present, and you also see the east-west collector is present, just as it was on the 2005 MTP. So the county, at least as of March of this year, thought enough of those roads that they should continue, they should continue to be present. Now, there were some problems with those alignments, and we talked about them at the March meeting, namely, that they went right through the HH Hunt development that had just been approved in the north-south, and the east-west went right through the Richmond Country Club, and so did the north-south for that matter, and also down the Cobblestone Circle. The county was responsive to our concerns and moved the alignment, next slide, please. I'll get to that in a minute, moved the alignment to the west for at least the north-south. But in the meantime, in the summer, two alignments were presented for the north-south collector, Option 1 and Option 2. Taking Option 2, Option 2 never saw the light of day. But Option 2, it's worth noting, if you look in your packet, Option 2, if you look at the impact on Hockett Road, 1,200 average daily trips, which is actually less than it is now as of 2040, if, and this is my point, if the north-south collector is preserved as it was in Option 2. These are not my numbers, these are the county numbers and Kim Lee Horn's numbers. Next slide, please. Yeah, and that's back one, please. There you go. So this is the Option 1 that was presented. Now, notice, the alignment still goes through the Richmond Country Club and Cobblestone Circle area, but the point I want to make here, if you compare the impact on Hockett Road of Option 1 versus Option 2, you will see that it's between four and five times as much. If you go up here to the north, you'll see 6,200, I think the number is, average daily trips, and if you go to the south, you'll see 4,700. That's five or four times as much, depending upon how you measure it, using not actual numbers, but using the numbers that Mr. Kudlow talked about from the Regional Planning Agency. And the only difference is that the north-south, or the Hockett Road bypass is present in one and not the other. Next slide, please. So we move into August. Now, this is what we were presented in August, and we thank the county for its responsiveness. You'll see that we got what we feel is half a loaf in August. We have a half a loaf in the form of that the bottom half of the north-south collector is preserved, but it's moved west to avoid the impact on Richmond Country Club, Cobblestone Circle, and also to meet Patterson in an area where the topography allows it. We did not get, however, the preservation of the north-south collector north of Sneed Road, which is the very thing, as I said a second ago, that lessens the impact on Hockett Road existing by a factor of four or five, depending upon how you measure it. Next slide, please. So here is the same thing, only presented in the document, slide 48, that was presented to us on August 9, just like it was presented to you this evening, and also to the Board of Supervisors on August 29. It's very different from what you see today. What you see today, as you just saw, is a big circle with nothing in it. Here is what we have. We have the half loaf I was talking about before, we have the, at least the southern half of the north-south collector, and we have the east-west collector. And so, next slide, please. And so here is the actual slide, figure 4.1, the recommendations map, from the actual draft plan as of August. This is the one that we looked at in August, this is the one that we thought we were going with, and you will see, this is the area right here, right there, which is a smaller, you know, version of what you saw a second ago, with the northern, the southern half of the north-south or Hockett Road bypass moved to the west, but no north-south, no Hockett Road bypass from the north. And then finally, next slide, please. And this is the current one, and you see, again, basically nothing here. And again, this is just the absence of planning. This means that you have no guide for future development, as Mr. Kudlow said, you have no way of telling VDOT that you need funding for these roads, because you don't have a plan for them. And worst of all, you abdicate to the private development community, the planning of the county, because you're saying to them, based upon future traffic impact studies that they're going to submit in connection with rezonings in the future, what they're going to do for the benefit of their development without regard to how it impacts the county road network as a whole. And the whole exercise here is to create roads that will lessen the impact on all the roads in the county overall, not just what will service a developer's development. As you may know, when a developer comes in with a traffic impact analysis, there's a scoping session with VDOT, and VDOT says, what intersections do you want to study? There are limits to that scoping area. And so as a result, it's not a county-wide planning effort like you're doing here. It's a very sort of self-centered planning effort. And so without some guides for that future development, the county will be in a very bad position indeed, with no plan whatsoever for this area. And as we say, it will have the exact opposite impact on Hockett that's desired, because there will be no planning for a north-south collector that will alleviate a Hockett Road bypass, will alleviate the impact on Hockett Road. Next slide, please. So as Mr. Haynes said, here is our plan. And we've presented this to the Board of Supervisors, we've presented it to staff, we've presented it to you. And it has the best of both worlds. It both avoids the impact on Richmond Country Club and Cobblestone Circle by moving the southern half of the east-west collector, excuse me, the north-south, the Hockett Road bypass to the west here, makes his dog leg to the west, but it also preserves the north-south collector, Hockett Road bypass north of Sneed Road up to here, which, as I said earlier, will reduce the impact on existing Hockett Road by a factor of four to five. What we ask of you, our specific ask, is that you defer action on this plan until this concept, what I call the best of both worlds, is thoroughly studied and vetted, and you do not leave future planning to the private development community with absolutely no plan for this very important area, which is designated for the highest growth in the county, the prime economic development area. Thank you very much.
Sir, I have a question before you leave.
Sure.
I think we follow what you're saying here and what you're proposing, and you have made the staff available, I mean, you've made this available to the staff.
Yes, sir.
You talked about having a plan, and you proposed one.
Right.
Would your clients be interested in designing and paying for construction of these roads?
Well, in fact, our clients have offered, and this offer has been made in writing. You may know that the most, very significant amount or very significant cost for these roads is the actual land cost. And our clients have in writing offered to dedicate to the county the right-of-way for almost, or a very large percentage of this road network. And so we're willing to do that.
But the design and construction?
Well, the design and construction would be done by the private development community as land development comes in, and that's the whole point. The whole point is, if you have a plan, then you can say to the development community, as they come in with rezonings, we need you to proffer, we need you to proffer or to provide right-of-way for this road. Why? Not because the sky is blue, but because it's on our plan, because it's there. If you don't have a plan, there's no way to say that to the private development community. So we're not suggesting that the public pay for these roads. On the contrary, what we want to be able to do is for the county to be in a position that it can say to the private development community, you need to provide for this infrastructure because it's on our plan. And you just can't do that if you don't have a plan, which is what you have now, you have no plan.
Thank you. Any other questions for the cell? Thank you. Anyone else who would like to come forward? Mr. Kilduff or Ms. Hunter, would you like to, like the response to this?
Are we closing the public hearing?
Just close the public hearing.
Yes, this is a plan, and we do believe that even though this section is just circled, there is a plan, there is some guidance to staff as we review these traffic analyses. It clearly states on there what we want in that area, that we do want connectivity, but we do want to preserve Hockett Road as a two-lane road. So in our opinion, it is a plan. It's very, very common to have new development come in, in an area, and build the roads. We don't know what the development's going to be, we believe it's inappropriate to have it done when we know what this development is. This property is actually not prime economic development, it's residential, and I believe it's flexible, so we have no idea what this is going to be. So we do believe it's appropriate to review it through traffic impact analysis, and with that guidance that the plan shows of what our goals are for that area, that we'd be able to successfully design the roads for that area.
And so you're suggesting that when, if and when, development plans are proposed, that this road network would be considered along with other options?
Correct.
So this would be on the table to be considered when, in fact, the area comes forward with a development plan?
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Joanne. Let me just comment here, and I want to get the other commissioners' thoughts on this as well. Obviously, there are some issues here. We've had a lot of correspondence, a lot of contact from landowners in the area. You know, I think the heart of our comprehensive plan is that the 15% of the county where this area, you know, certainly lies, east of Manicent Road between essentially Broad and Patterson, is the area of, and that includes West Creek, is the economic engine for the county. And by encouraging development, the right kind of development in this area, the designated growth area, we can protect the 85% of the county that is rural. And that's the heart and soul of the comprehensive plan. But we can't get the, I think we can't get the cart ahead of the horse. We've sort of got to know what the private community wants to do in this area before we can make a firm commitment to how we will serve that development. So what the staff has proposed here is that a road network is needed. And the plan, the major thoroughfare plan update, is a vision. It's, nothing is designed specifically, nothing is funded specifically, it's a vision, it's a plan, it's a basic vision from which specific plans will be developed. So from where I sit, what the staff has proposed here, knowing that the MTP is a living document, it's not cast in concrete, and what they're proposing going forward makes sense to me.
Well, I think if you'll notice from the 2005 plan, the majority of those projects haven't been done. And like the other commissioner here says, this is basically a plan, and these are, majority of this is existing roads being widened, interchanges improved. There's only a few, Wilkes Ridge for one, that's really a new road, new extension, in reaction to what was going on. You know, 20 years ago, when West Creek was developed, it was theoretically it would be all commercial. And that's turned out to be, for the last couple of years of rezoning, most of the rezoning we've done in there has been residential. So the use has changed, the market's changed. So it's hard to predict what will happen. So I think this being, like John says, a living document, that if and when a developer comes in and wants to do something in this area that we've just talked about, that's the time for the staff to look at it, look at the plans. And generally, we make the developers put in the roads, and we don't have to pay for the road improvements like we're funding in these projects. So I think it's a viable solution to leave that open right now until we know what's going in there. Somebody may come in and want to develop the whole thing and put a manufacturing plant in there, Amazon may come in, who knows? But you just don't know, you can't deal with what you don't know.
I think that's a good point, Tom. I'd also like to say that, you know, we've, this is great input. I mean, what the Speeda landowners have, you know, have offered, what West Creek Associates has offered is great information, and I know it's taken quite seriously by the staff and by us, and it will be by the board as well. So it isn't that what you're proposing is being cast aside, quite the contrary. It's being taken under advisement, and it will be on the table as we go forward. At least that's my view of this MTP update. Any other comments, gentlemen? Well, we act on motion.
One comment I would like to say, the staff's recommendation about Fairground Road being planned for four lanes instead of three, I mean, I think that, growing up in the county and seeing how the traffic has changed on Fairground Road, and I guess what its original intent was and how it's evolved, I think that that is appropriate in the long haul. Not tomorrow, but I think we need to definitely pencil that one in for four lanes.
All right, that comment is duly noted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the staff's proposed 2040 transportation plan with...
Would that include the four or the three lanes?
For Fairground Road, they have some options. Did you want, did your motion include the four lanes for Fairground?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I would like to second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Again, I would like to say before we go to vote that, as Tom... Again, I would like to say before we go to vote that, as Tom reminded, or as I reminded everybody, this is a living document. It is not a fait accompli, and the input that we're receiving from the landowners in the area is on the table and will be, and will be given serious consideration and is much appreciated. So that said, the motion has been seconded. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The plan as submitted with the one modification with...
Yes, sir.
Is recommended for approval. Ms. Worley, do we have any other business?
No, sir.
Do we have any old business?
No, sir.
I think we've completed tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Slow move.
And a second.
Second.
We stand adjourned.